All right, it says it's being livestreamed.
Oh.
Perfect. Sorry about that.
It doesn't show it yet, but.
Yeah, it says it's. We're should be rolling, Jeannie. I have no one else in the waiting room, just you know. Ethan, we ought to start off. Explain what this meeting really is, the purpose of it.
Okay.
And then we can go from there and then you could maybe take. Introduce Jim and then all the guests are going to have to let us know who they are and and. And this is just a pre-application meeting and which is required under the sub the town subdivision ordinance. Not a public hearing. This is a pre-application meeting and it's also qualifies as a public information meeting. All the others have been noticed as required. And again, it's just a minor subdivision creation of. Lot being split into two. And we'll take it from there. From after this, we will end up having to do a site visit because that is required in the ordinance. It does say you shall do one. So the hope is that we can do that. At some point. Maybe even the day of the subdivision or the hearing and we're hoping for that to be on the seventh. Of October. So Ethan, you can take it from here and maybe just some. We've got four members again, no real decisions are being made other than scheduling. A public hearing and the site visit.
Okay, thanks Jeremy. This is the planning Camden Planning Board meeting Thursday, September nine, 2021. First off, Jeremy, you explained the process for the Zoom meetings already?
I could do that again.
Really?
I could do that again and just identify that the Camden Planning Board did. At its last meeting or maybe it was the meeting before. I don't remember. I think the last one adopted. A remote participation and a remote meeting structure for the planning board for the next 60 days. Primarily due to the. Increase in the COVID and the Delta variant and all that. So as well as we have a couple of members that are in and out of town. And we did adopt that policy. So we are encouraging everyone to submit comments and email. Beforehand, the public Zoom link is available. It's available on YouTube. People can even text me during the meeting is awkward as that is. Or maybe we're just trying to provide sufficient comment from the public and interest. And I think it does that. So there we go.
Thanks, Jeremy.
Maybe I also want to mention, maybe if there's some non-agenda items, don't forget.
I'm going next to that. Yep.
Perfect.
So the first thing then on the agenda would be or the next thing on the agenda would be any public comments on non-agenda items. I'll start first with you, Jeremy. Has anybody submitted any public comment?
On non-agenda items? No.
Yeah, correct. Non-agenda.
No.
Any members of the board?
I I do have a non-agenda item.
Okay, Mark, go ahead.
In reviewing the. Last select board meeting, which was. What Tuesday night? Mark Ratner. Represented the planning board. Is having overwhelming support for the. Change in the downtown public or downtown parking requirements. And. That's not correct. He was mistaken. There certainly wasn't overwhelming support by the planning board because I voted against it. And I still have reservations about it. I feel it could have been handled in a much different manner. Than eliminating regulations completely. So I just want to make that as a public comment and noted in the record, please.
Okay. Yeah, and Mark, I appreciate that. Definitely. I wouldn't characterize it as overwhelming support either. You voiced your. Opinion quite clearly. You did vote to send it on to the select board with us, but that doesn't mean that you supported the ordinance per se. So I think, you know, one way to correct that is to potentially send a comment to the select board personally. If that's something you'd like to do or even, you know, comment on their next meeting, but. Certainly, you know, you have this form here and I agree with your characterization.
Yes.
Okay, Jeremy.
I I could just follow up. I did draft a memo for the select board. I think I wrote it the last time when they just decided to have the public hearing and I did note that it was three to one vote. So I think I could probably maybe resend that to them and just maybe even and let them know that this public. Item, this item came up and I can just send it, send it off if you'd like, Mark.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Sure.
Great. Any other non-agenda items?
No.
Okay, seeing done, we're going to go right ahead then and move into the application. This is a pre-application. Meeting for minor subdivision, Matchbox subdivision. One oh eight Bayview Street. And the applicant is seeking permission to create one new lot with frontage along Bayview Street. And representing the applicant is Jim Dorsky. And also we have Tam Ward here as the buyer, as the applicant's representative. So Jim, I'm going to go ahead and yield the floor to you. And please just state your name for the record and then go on into your presentation and share your screen as you need to.
Ethan, can I maybe just ask one question since this is kind of this is serving as a public informational meeting and and the. There's a couple other people here. I see a Don Abbott and then somebody on iPhone and I don't know who that is, but maybe just get their names.
Okay.
So that they're in the conversation rather than such a formal thing, if that's.
Right. And yeah, thank you for reminding me because we did pre-meeting. Established that Don is here as a butter.
I'm I'm at 112 Bayview Street.
Great.
All right.
Thank you, Don. And then someone on the iPhone, can you chime in and let us know who you are and where you live?
Yeah, that's probably Derek Norton at 105 Bayview Street.
Great. Welcome, Derek.
All right. Nice to be here. Thank you.
Ethan. You might want to just formally. Combine the pre-app and the public informational meeting. They're actually two separate. But I I wouldn't see any problem in combining them. Then Jim doesn't have to go back over stuff. A butter's interested parties can speak now.
Yeah, that's definitely what I intended, but thank you for bringing that up. We will go ahead and formally combine the two meetings after the. Presentation by Jim Dorsky. We will allow board members to ask questions and the public to ask questions on cue. Please just. I guess raise your hand and I'll try to try to call on people as I see them come up. And but the public is definitely allowed to participate in this if they have any questions or comments. Thank you, Jeannie. So Jim, now I do officially turn the meeting over to you. You have the floor.
Okay, thank you. I am Jim Dorsky with Garland Dorsky Engineering and Surveying. And I'm representing Matchbox 108 LLC in their application for a subdivision at 108 Bayview Street. And I'm gonna share my screen.
And real quickly, could I just suggest that everybody else go ahead and mute while Jim's presenting? I hear some background noise.
So I'll start out by, I explained this in the submission package, a little of the history and why we're here, but. I'll run through this. This is a. A copy of a survey that we did to divide. What is shown as lot 15. On this particular tax map, I think it's 125. Last year in 2020, we divided that property into two lots. And so that was just one division. It did not require subdivision review. So now the owner of what was shown on that plan as proposed lot B. Wants to divide that property. And so that being the second division in less than five years, that does now require subdivision review. So the subject of the subdivision is this proposed lot B. Which we now. Have that being the focus on this new plan. And now showing a lot one and a lot two. So this one division is the second division within five years. So we have a subdivision. There isn't, the family that owns this property is not planning to sell anything. The only reason they're doing this is because they'd like to have a second dwelling on this property. And as the lot exists right now, it doesn't have enough shore furniture for a second dwelling. In this zone, in the shoreline zone, you're required to have 150 feet of shore furniture per dwelling unit. And so you would need 300. Feet of shore furniture to have a second dwelling and they don't, they're shy of that. It's 268, I think it says. So in order to. Create a situation where they could have a second dwelling, we've got to create a separate parcel. So what this does is it creates, you know, the majority of the land going with lot one for the this bigger house. And then the second lot will contain the other dwelling. They both have the minimum road frontage that which is 75 feet. Lot one has 76 feet here in the shoreline zone. In most circumstances, you're required to have 30, 30,000 square feet of land area. This lot has over an acre, that 30,000 is less than an acre. So this has enough. But when the lot is in the shoreline zone, but entirely outside the 75 foot setback, which is here. And so this lot being completely outside the 75 foot setback. In this village zone, the lot only has to be a minimum of 10,000 square feet. And we've got this lot being over 13,000. So they they both meet the zoning requirements. Nothing's being conveyed or anything. This is just a reconfiguration. To allow a second dwelling and have everything meet the zoning requirements. I will say that and this Jeremy brought this up to me yesterday and I talked about it with the owners. We have an existing garage, which is right here and it's shown on the plan with a dashed line. They'd like to remove that. And so their plan is to put the dwelling unit here. So they'd be actually. Moving a building that has its front face right on the right of way line. Back to meet all the setback requirements. So we showed that on here to kind of give the planning board an understanding of what's planned and what's going on. But this new building is actually nothing that the planning board would review. The subdivision review is really about the property lines and creating two lots and that they meet the zoning requirements. So on the final plan, we actually are planning to remove this from the plan. We won't show the proposed building. We also don't want to. You know, make anybody think that you're approving the building because you wouldn't have the authority to even review that. That's something the. Code's office will will do with the owner when they when they do that. Another thing that Jeremy brought up was that. You cannot have an accessory structure on a lot without a principal structure. And so the creation of this lot too, having just a garage on it, which is not a principal structure, principal use. In this zone would technically create a non-conforming situation. So what we talked about doing and having on the final plan was. A condition of approval, which is often done, which is why I already have a condition of approval area in the signature block. The idea that I discussed with Jeremy was having a condition of approval on the plan. That would say something like. This approval does not become effective until the garage shown on lot two has been removed. Because otherwise you'd be, you know, upon approval, you would have created a situation where you've got. An accessory structure with no principal structure on the property. So in effect. The approval isn't really effective until this building goes and removes that non-conformance issue. And then all then at that point in time, you've got everything conforming and the final approval becoming effective all at once. So. That's pretty much it in a nutshell. It's pretty simple. You know, there's, there's. There is a new building that's going to happen here. It's not really part of your review, but that's, that's the purpose of why this is all happening. And in the end, you know, the new building is virtually the same size as the old one. It's just moved back to meet the setback requirements and it'll. It'll have a kitchen in it, which the other one doesn't. And that's the difference to make it a dwelling. So I'll take any questions if anybody. If anybody has.
Okay, Jim, thanks. I think you can stop sharing your screen for the moment.
Okay.
Go ahead, Don. Please state your name and residence for the record.
Yeah, Don Abbott, 112 Bayview Street. What, what, what in fact is is their intention? It it's not just not to sell it. What are they going to use it for?
They want to be able to have another dwelling that's got a kitchen, place. A dwelling is pretty much defined and thought of as having a place to sleep. A place, a kitchen to cook meals and eat and a place to go to the bathroom. Those are pretty much the things that make a dwelling. And so they wanted to be able to have a second dwelling on this property. But they don't have enough shore furniture to be able to do that. Otherwise, if they had 300 feet of shore furniture. They wouldn't need to do this subdivision and create another lot. They just build another dwelling on the property, which would be allowed. But because they don't have enough shore furniture, they need to create. And a separate lot for this other dwelling.
So is that basically going to be a guest house?
I guess so.
Yes, I'll chime in here. So I'm Tam Ward. I'm the manager of the LLC that owns the property and I'm representing the the owners. So the purpose is exactly that. It's it's just meant to be a guest house. So on their, their lot, they would love to just have a guest house and then drew out the. The research and talking with Jim. We learned that we needed to do a subdivision in order to make that happen.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I have a couple points I'd like to bring up.
Okay, go ahead, Mark.
Number one, you're. Not sure as I agree with your. Assessment of an accessory structure. My thought would be that when you you divide the land. The garage actually becomes the primary structure for that property. So, you know, although it's an accessory structure for the current existing house. I don't know that interpretation would be. Proper, but that's something to think about and discuss. The other issue that I see is. The subdivision. Would become the three lots. So your lot A, which you divided a year ago. Now becomes part of the subdivision requirements. So.
I'm thinking. I can answer those two. Those two questions. So.
Yeah, go ahead, Jim.
Yeah.
So the, I think the reason, and I've been through this with Jeremy. And I've been through it with him before, actually. And I'd forgotten about this, but it's basically comes down to what the what the permitted uses are in this zone. And so it's a residential district. And if you go and look through the permitted uses. Having a garage on a lot without a principal structure is not permitted. So if it were a dwelling and it was, it was a residence, that would be permitted. But having a garage by itself, it's not, not a dwelling. It's not a permitted use in this district. So that's why. It's, I mean, I guess maybe you don't want to call it an accessory structure, whatever you want to call it. Maybe you just say that having a garage. That doesn't have a kitchen is not a permitted use. And then, so anyway, Jeremy can chime in too if.
Yeah.
Yeah, Jeremy's jumping out of his chair. So let's give Jeremy the floor.
I mean, in order to have an accessory use, you have to have accessory uses are permitted uses in the zone. You can look in the village zone and they are permitted. But then you have to look at the definition of what accessory use is. And then when you look at the definition of accessory uses, it says it's clearly incidental to the principal use. And there is no principal use on the property. That's, that's the issue. The principal use is the house. You need to have. Even like in a business scenario, commercial property, you could have a commercial use that's permitted and they have an outbuilding that's accessory to that commercial use that's permitted. In this case, there's no principal use. Makes sense? I mean, that's.
It it does.
We do this all the time. This has been interpreted. I think there's court, court cases on this over the years. Every municipality, every code official, planning official that I've ever worked with and experienced. This is the standard interpretation of accessory uses. It's all based on the definition and you need to have. A principal use to have the accessory use. We, I will tell you, there are countless times when during our permitting. Of houses of lots that have just a garage on it and we have to work out an agreement. With the owner on how they're going to handle the accessory use until the primary use is on the property. And this is the situation here. Again, they could in, they could renovate this house to make it make a. There were this building and use that. However, they don't have the shore frontages Jim Jim talks about, talked about because the property is in the shoreline zone. I think Jim's summary was exactly, I mean, I couldn't set it any better on what the situation is here. I I'm going to let Jim speak to the three lot deal on how that first lot created, what happened there and then why this too creates the subdivision.
So, yeah. Like I said in the beginning. The first division in subdivision law and then this, and I will say that the subdivision statute is actually referenced and. Basically brought into the Camden subdivision ordinance and in the statute. It defines a subdivision as there's two ways to look at it. There's the creation of three lots within a five-year period. Or two divisions within a five-year period where the second division creates the third lot. But when you just have one division like we had in 2020 on lot 15 of the tax map. That created two lots, one division, not a subdivision. There's actually a section in the subdivision statute that basically says. Lots and divisions when not subject to this subchapter when created. Do not become subject to this subchapter by the subsequent division. Of either of the other two lots. And it makes sense because. If someone's got a piece of property and they sell off one lot. To property owner A. And then they sell off, you know, the remainder to property owner B. You know, a year later, or if it happens at the same time, there's no subdivision. And then if property owner B at some point within five years decides they want to divide their lot. They didn't want to make it so that the person who bought lot A is now subject to the subdivision. Because they weren't subject to it when they bought their lot and they have nothing to do with the subsequent decision of the other party to do a division. And so that's why there is something actually in the statute that specifically addresses that. And that's why I've done many of these in the past. The first lot out is not part of the subdivision. And sometimes we even had developers split a lot off to get a little cash to help with the subdivision. Sell it off and then they do the subdivision on the remainder of the land and the first lot isn't part of the subdivision.
Thank you, Jim. I think that's a really clear explanation. Mark, do you have any follow up on that?
I I do. Jim, could you reference that in the subdivision ordinance?
Well, the subdivision ordinance references the statute, which is titled 30A, section 4401. Through 4407, actually. And.
I mean, I I guess you you don't really have to reference it right now, but.
It's within the definition of subdivision.
Reference it on the plan?
Reference it on the plan. Why? Lot is is not applicable.
Sure. We can add that.
In essence, in essence, the subdivision is the two lots that are created. You make both process.
Right. And then if you could just put a note in there explaining why that is.
Sure. Yeah, I can do that.
I see your hand, Anita.
So. This is, is this in the traditional village district with an overlay of the shoreline zone?
Yes.
Okay. I'm curious about in other portions of the traditional village district. Isn't it permissible for a property owner to. Make a little. Separate apartment or building on their lot. That they can rent out as long as they are resident to the primary home.
Yes, but if you recall, I don't know if you were on the board when we did the accessory apartments, Anita. I'm not sure you were, but. Properties in the shoreline zone, we can't go below the minimum standard in the shoreline zone. So that that whole section doesn't apply in the shoreline.
Okay. Okay, and. I see. And the proposed new building, you know, it's it's a kind of a long thin lot would would. It looks like it just what has been sketched in there would barely squeeze into. The required setbacks on that subdivided lot. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And another question is, I'm wondering why. Is there some reason that this subdivision did not take place last year? When we, you divided 15 into 15 and 15-1.
I think, I mean, Tam might be able to speak to this, but my understanding was that they just. Weren't quite ready or knew exactly what they wanted to do. And I mean, when I first looked at the issue for them, they were even considering renovating the existing garage. And I think the division with the other party and just getting that division done was more pressing. Than figuring out what they were going to do and how they were going to create a second dwelling.
That's correct. I can confirm that they they really didn't have a solid plan. As to what they were going to do with that that lot, that property. Until this year.
So, so when proposed new building is built. Because it's a separate lot now after this, if this is approved. It will be required to have a kitchen and a bathroom. As well as residential space. I mean, you didn't mention bathroom as part of the plan. You mentioned kitchen. So am I correct in assuming that this will. Will have those requirements within it?
Yeah, it will have all those things. It'll be a dwelling, yes.
I'm looking around for any other questions or comments from the board or members of the public.
I think Don has one.
Don, yep, go ahead.
Thank you. Am I right in and thinking that there can be no commercial use of that dwelling? Of the new dwelling?
I mean, the uses that are allowed would be that which are in the village just loud in all of the village district properties. So I can. You know, it's very, if there's any, it's very, very, very limited. I don't know if I'm ahead. So, you know. Cemeteries and churches are municipal buildings that are allowed. Two-family dwellings are allowed. Commercial uses, outdoor storage of boats. There's a whole host of screening standards. Hotels and motels are allowed in the village zone, but those are in existence already. So really nothing much. Home occupations are allowed.
I'm sorry, why is the hotel already existing?
Well, that's the way the Camden does their zoning ordinance. We we do it in such a way that we limit uses. We allow uses that were in existence at a certain date. We don't allow new ones.
So, so to expand upon that, it's. It it's not a hotel that would be allowed there. It's the expansion of an existing hotel.
Correct.
Mr. Abbott, are you asking if the new dwelling unit can be rented? Is that the commercial use you were thinking of?
Well, that that's one commercial use. Another could be a small shop.
No, 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 those are not allowed. They're not allowed in your property. No, 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 those are not allowed, they're not allowed in your property, they're not allowed on this property. Um, they're not allowed in the village zone, retail shops.
Right, I, I know it's not on my property.
Yeah.
But I just wanted to make sure that separating this off doesn't create something.
Yeah, so I think, I think you heard from Jeremy that, that, um, a home occupation would be probably the, one of the few things that might be allowed there.
Things that would be allowed.
Doesn't, it doesn't sound like that's in the owner's plans, but we can't rule that out. Um, and then you said something about storage of boats outside with some screening requirements. That's about it, um. And, and, uh, if, if you're concerned about renting the property, I think, you know. Rental of the property would be the same as any other landowner in that district.
In the village district.
Yeah.
Exactly.
And if you, I mean, I, I can ask Tam, if, if Tam, is it the owner's intent to rent out this property?
No. The intent is to use it personally.
Yeah, so, I mean, doesn't mean that it won't be sold sometime down the road and somebody does that, but, um, they would be, you know, uh. Forced to comply with any ordinances and. The requirements as, as there are, such as there are.
I appreciate the questions, I, I do appreciate the questions, I think, you know, clearly. This stuff's not part of a subdivision review, uh, because.
Sure, but Jeremy, I mean, we have, we have the public here and they're interested in. We're using it as informational meeting, so, um, I'm going to, uh, allow and encourage any questions. Um, Anita, go ahead.
Um, I don't know whether this is a question I can ask at this time, or if there's sort of. Uh, chapters that you're gonna go through in terms of what we're looking at, but, um. Uh, in part of this application. Uh, the applicant is seeking a waiver of a number of things. Uh, one of those is a waiver of B four E storm water plan. Another is B four O provisions for controlling erosion and sedimentation, including measures to capture sediment. During construction and measures to stabilize soil. Um, and it gives as its basis for this request for the waivers. There's another waiver too about, uh, designating where water and sewer and other utilities are. The basis for the request is that this does not propose new infrastructure like streets. Um, I don't really understand all of that, I, I don't understand why you would waiver sedimentation control. Um, and, uh, on this, if there's gonna be a building built there and. Anytime the soil is disturbed, there's, there are concerns regarding controlling erosion, so can you help us understand that?
Well, I, I think I can help us a little bit on that, I mean, I'll, I'll give Jim the floor in a second, but this is not an application for a building. And there's no construction going on with the subdivision. They're drawing a line, an imaginary line. And putting a couple of pins in the ground. There's no new driveway or road cut proposed. It's just the division of a lot. If they go to. Build a building on this site. They will be required to meet any. Um, storm water and then erosion control measures. That's my read of it, is that what you think, Jim?
Yeah, that, that's basically it, tho- those, those requirements are intended to. Have to do with infrastructure that's part of the subdivision. So, like, when we do a subdivision that's got a road and it's got eight lots or whatever. You don't have all of that information that I'm, we're asking waivers for being addressed on the lots themselves. For the houses that are gonna be built there, it's to do with the, the road. Um, you know, that's being constructed, infrastructure for the subdivision as a whole. And so, the, the building that's gonna be constructed there, all of that development will be reviewed by the code office, that's where that review happens. It's not part of the subdivision review.
Well, you muted Anita, but thank you, Jim.
Can I ask another question? The, the drawing on lot one. Um, of this, uh. Of this section does include a gravel driveway that I think is not in place at this time, I'm not sure. Um, so that, what about that?
There is a gravel driveway, but again, that's a private driveway for the benefit of that one lot only on that lot.
So that, that is in existence now, is that what you're saying? Okay.
That is a pre-existing driveway, yeah.
And it's been there forever.
Okay, fine, and, um, are the, is there? Is the question of tree removal, um, irrelevant to this discussion?
Yes.
It's like Ethan said, you know, the subdivision is about the creation of the lots. Not the development of the lots themselves. And there's no infrastructure development for the subdivision as a whole. It's just lot lines, making sure the lots meet the zoning requirements.
Right, and Anita, I, I had those same, same questions and it, it makes a lot of sense, I mean, it's. The, the requirements they're asking for waivers on. You know, I can understand that, it pertains to the overall subdivision development itself.
Okay.
Ethan, you got, um, Derek is, um, I know. And Andy had a comment, but I just don't want you to forget, and, um, Derek's raising his hand.
Oh yeah, I see that now, thank you, um, Andy, do you mind if I go with Derek real quick? Derek, go ahead.
Yeah, hi guys, I just wanted to jump in real quick, um, I'm sorry for no video. Um, I'm putting a two and a four year old in the bath right now and, and nobody wants to see that. Um, Dawn, Dawn knows those two kids well. Um, Jim, good, uh, good overview, um, appreciate that. Um, I think, you know, the, the. The thirty thousand, uh, you know, foot elevation view is, is the reason there's these. These zoning laws in place for this particular part of town and these zoning is to keep density down. I mean, I mean, that's the whole point that we're talking about, correct, is to just limit density on shorefront and in the downtown area. So I'm just curious why we wanna, you know. Um, make an amendment. On a, in a, in a bylaw that's meant to limit density that everyone else on the street adheres to.
Well, we're, we're not making an amendment, we're actually meeting all the zoning requirements.
You are, we're trying to pass it, yeah, we're trying to do an additional subdivision, yeah.
Right, but, but again, as. He's, he's meeting the, he's exceeding the, the required lot size. So anybody, uh, in that district that has a lot of this size is free to, um. Divide that lot.
Right.
So we're not, we're not making any, um, we're not bending any, any rules or, or requirements. They're just simply meeting those requirements by my understanding.
Yeah, the minimum lot size is ten thousand square feet.
Right. But not, not in that, not in that original, original waterfrontage parcel, correct?
The surely, well, in the traditional village district requires ten thousand square feet.
Yeah.
Look at article ten, which deals with shoreline zoning. The basic shoreline zoning requires thirty thousand square feet, but also within article ten. It says that lots that are entirely outside of the seventy five foot setback. Meaning it's, you know, it's basically not a shorefront lot, those can be the ten thousand square foot lots.
Right.
So, lot two is thirteen thousand square feet and it's entirely out of the setback.
Right, I get, you're calving off, okay, so the, the water, the front, the three hundred feet waterfrontage doesn't apply. Because they meet the, the setbacks, the lot, minimum lot size.
It's the other way around, but I think that's right.
Yeah.
I mean, if they had forty more, forty more feet or so, they'd, they'd have it, right?
Right, no, it's just fifty feet or so, yeah, something like that, yeah, okay. I'm just, my, my only concern is the, the, the effect on density in a, in an area that doesn't need anymore. Um, you know, as it, as a basic, you know. Not a concern, just a, it's just something that kind of gets you back up when you're close to it. And it should be everyone's concern, the last thing we want to do is, is have greater density, um, in the area. I think everyone can agree on that.
Okay, Derek, thank you for your comment, has your question been answered?
Yes, more or less, yeah.
I want to give, uh, Andrew a chance to jump in, Andrew, go ahead.
Yeah, I had a question about the, the, um, the garage, so. Removal of the garage was gonna be a condition of the approval for the subdivision. So, so just coming back to the waivers for a second, um. Is, is that gonna create conditions where, you know, some sediment control and erosion will be needed when the garage is removed or not?
Well, they'll need a demolition permit from the codes office again, which will, that will deal with all that, that demo.
Okay.
Yep.
That was my question.
Thank you, Andrew.
You know, that, on that, on that point, that garage.
Again, Don, we just, we just need you to identify yourself each time you speak.
Oh, sorry, don't have it.
It's okay, yep.
Hundred and twelve. Uh, that garage is pretty much right uphill from the brand new house that they're just finishing. And, and so all that sediment, uh, is, is gonna, i- if, if there is any, all that sediment is gonna wash right into their, their new house. Uh, so it would be in their interest to make sure that they control it pretty well, I would think, and I, I know that's not the subject of this meeting, but. Nevertheless, logically, you'd think that's the way the thing's gonna go.
Yeah. Yep, and you're absolutely right. It's not a, it's not a part of this meeting to, um. To talk about sediment control in the, the demolition of the garage, um, because that will require a separate permit.
Is the, uh, the right of way that's being given to the, uh, lot two, uh, from the. Sort of north side of, uh, north side of lot one. Is that part of this at all?
It's a requirement actually of subdivisions in the shoreline zone. Um, to, to give right of ways to back lots basically to get to the water. They're all the same family, it's not really gonna mean anything to them personally, you know, in the near term anyway, but. It is a requirement, a subdivision, in subdivisions in the shoreline zone to create a right of way for those back lots to get to the shore.
But that can't be developed, can it? I mean, you couldn't pave and put steps in there?
There's other existing, right, you know, D E P regulations and everything about what, what could be put there, I think it's. Like a six foot meandering path, you know, it's. It's pretty limited, they could, how they could develop that. And they don't plan to develop it at all because they're all the same people using the property as, as their own.
Well, it's just that if the public could use it, you know, the public walks there, the, the, Lake Beach is a, is a dog park now. And so the public could use that, uh, to wander up. But I, I, I guess the right of way is, is just in favor of, of lot, the new lot two.
That's correct.
So the public would not be able to use that.
That's right.
Thank you.
Okay, I see Anita's hand up, go ahead, Anita.
Um. I think it makes sense during a meeting and a discussion like this. Not to say, no worries, this is, this is all in the ownership of the same family. Frankly, that's irrelevant. What you're doing is you're creating a new lot. And going forward, anything can happen within the regulations of the town. So, um, I, I think it's wise not to. Keep saying, oh, that's not gonna happen, it's in the same family, because, you know, we've seen, we've been around long enough to see plenty of change and. You know, ownership changes pretty regularly, so.
Yeah, I appreciate that, Anita, I do, I do think it's not particularly relevant. Um, because as we all know, the, the new lot is subject to all the zoning requirements for the district and that's really what matters. Um, anybody, even if, I mean, an owner can come in here and promise to. To do X, Y, Z with the lot and they're not gonna do X, Y, Z and next thing you know, they turn around and sell it, that absolutely can happen. Um, so, that's appreciated, um. Anyone else have any questions for Jim or any comments on this application? Anything else, Mark, for instance, that you'd like to see on the plans or, um. Anything that's not covered?
I think you formally to, um. Okay, the waivers as well.
Uh, in a, in a pre-application meeting?
Uh, I, I think what we need to do is go through. Uh, the requirements for the application. And, and see that it meets all the requirements. And part of that might. Include the, the waivers.
It does. You have to set a sidewalk, you have to decide if you're gonna have a public hearing, you have to approve any waiver requests. And there are a couple more things that are part of this.
See that, yep.
Yeah. Best to take them in order, I agree with Mark.
Right, I, I think that's great, uh, Anita, I see your hand up, if you wanna get something in here.
Yeah, I'm sorry to trouble you again. Uh, you were, you're having a discussion a little bit earlier about, uh, a right of way. Um, could you please clarify that more fully? What were you talking about? Yeah, I'm looking at the, I'm looking at the, um, packet, so, but if you want to share a screen, then everyone can see, um. What did, what did you mean by that?
Yeah, um. So, if you see right here in the middle of the screen, it says twenty five foot right of way to benefit lot two. So between this. Light blue colored line and the property line, there's a twenty five foot right of way. That runs from the property line of lot two to the shore. And the only reason we did that is because. The ordinance requires it. In subdivisions that are in the shoreline zone, you have to provide a right of way for the lot owners. To get to the shore, the idea being if you've got a lot in a subdivision but you don't have shore access. The ordinance requires you to provide shore access for this lot. That's, that's why this is here.
And it's, felt it's not anything, again, it's just, it's just lines, um, on the plan.
But that.
Right, but it's, it's right.
Is in the village district, it's not in the shoreline.
It's mostly in the shoreline zone, actually, the two hundred and fifty foot shoreline zone ends right here. So almost all of lot two is in the shoreline zone as well. The, the two fifty is, is way out here, so the entirety of lot one is in the shoreline zone.
So, uh, why is it classified as village then?
It's in, the shoreline zone is an overlay. So lot one is entirely in the village district and the shoreline zone. Lot two is entirely in the village district and partly in the shoreline zone. These lots over here are in the village district, but not in the shoreline zone at all.
You can also go downtown and you have downtown properties that are in the B one, but they're also in the shoreline zone.
Okay, what, excuse me, would I be correct in understanding that the red dotted line? That you see just under the word fif- fifteen foot setback? And then you follow it diagonally. Across that, that line and it sort of crosses over the lot two boundary towards Bayview Street. That is the shoreline zone.
This one?
Yes, that one, that's the shoreline zone, isn't it?
Yeah, so if you look right here, it says two hundred and fifty foot shoreline zone, there's an arrow going from the high water mark all the way. To this red line.
So.
Follow that red line, that's the two hundred and fifty.
So lot two is. Very much in the shoreline zone with the exception of a teeny tiny little wedge, um, for the proposed building.
And if you look at the label of the lot area, it's thirteen thousand three hundred and twenty eight square feet. But twelve thousand nine forty square feet within the shoreline zone.
And does that, uh, difference in square footage, uh. Effect any kind of, uh, rights or privileges or requirements? Like, only, they have to do only X percentage because only X percentage is in the shoreline zone, is anything like that?
The main thing is lot coverage. So, or gra- I guess it's ground coverage in Camden, is what they call it. Um, so in the shoreline zone, you're only allowed to have twenty percent ground coverage. On that portion of the lot that's within the shoreline zone. And that's why we actually calculated that to take a look at what the lot coverage is gonna look like on this lot. Uh, to make sure that they weren't gonna have any issues with getting over that twenty percent.
Thanks, that's really helpful.
Those are all things that are reviewed when the permit's issued as well, Anita. For a building. For a building.
Okay, any further questions before we go through the, the detailed list? Okay, I don't see any. Jeremy, you have nothing on your end there?
No.
Okay. All right, I'm going to go ahead and um, you know, we weren't really in a formal public comment, but we were having a question and answer, public information meeting. Uh, I hope all your questions were answered, and I thank you, uh, Jim, for your uh responses. Um, we do need now to go through the pre-application determinations. Um, we need to determine a few things, some of which may or may not be relevant. Um, but we're here for, um, at the beginning, we have um a submission of waiver requests. It's been suggested that we go ahead and approve or deny those waiver requests here. Um, so I'm going to ask the board if there's any discussion, further discussion on the waiver request. I think we've identified that there's no disturbing of uh soil with the subdivision as the application has come before us. Is there any discussion with the board? Okay, I don't see any, so I'm gonna go ahead and take a roll call vote. Uh, somebody wanna make a motion to approve the waiver request?
Well, I, I, I think maybe Ethan, we wanna go through each waiver.
Okay, I'm happy to do that. Give me a second to pull it up.
Can I ask you a question while you're doing that?
You may.
Um, I, I would be very interested. I, I expect I would have heard, but I'm gonna ask anyway. Officially, I'd be very interested to know whether uh there are any other concerns that Mr. Abbott has.
Well, well, Anita, I've given, I think, plenty of opportunity for public comment, and I think Mr. Abbott uh passed on any opportunity to speak, but I'm happy to let him say he passes again.
I, I pass again. But thank you, thank you for the offer.
Yep. Okay, so I've got the waiver request in front of me now. Um, I'll go ahead and read um uh the, the letter. Uh, dear board members, as part of the pre-application submission, we are including this letter for the purpose of requesting waivers from the minor subdivision submission requirements. The submission requirements we seek waivers for are contained in appendix B of the subdivision ordinance and are as follows. Submission requirements requested to be waived. Appendix B one M, as in Mary. A performance guarantee meeting the requirements of Article ten. Um, I don't have the code immediately in front of me, although I can pull it up. Does anybody have any statement on that?
Could Jeremy uh clarify that part for us?
Or uh, Jim, Jim, I'd be happy to let you chime in too here.
The, the performance guarantee is meant to make sure that there's enough money in the bank to do the infrastructure work for the subdivision. There isn't any.
There is none, so I would move that that is non- applicable.
Thank you.
Um, take a vote from the board. We'll do each one of these, I guess, uh individually. Uh, Andrew? Are you in agreement?
I am, yeah, I'm in.
Does not apply, okay. Anita?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
And it's an aye from me. Okay, uh, appendix B four C, a stormwater plan showing ditches, culverts, catch basin, detention or retention areas, et cetera. Um, again, here I would move that there are no uh ditches, culverts, catch basin, catch basins. There's no reason for a stormwater plan because no uh, no construction is happening here. Uh, Andrew?
Aye, in favor.
Anita?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Okay. Um, appendix B four F, location of all proposed utilities, including electrical cable, water and sewer. Um, I don't wanna run the whole show here, but just in, in the interest of expediency, um, I would move that uh we waive appendix B four F, the requirement, uh because again, there's no infrastructure here. Andrew?
Aye.
Anita?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
That's an aye for me, that's four zero. Um, next is appendix B four O. Provisions for controlling erosion and sedimentation, including measures to capture sediment during construction and measures to stabilize the soil. Again, I will make the motion to uh waive this provision um because there is no construction or infrastructure. Andrew?
Aye. I would like to also maybe add that any any additional um, uh. Never mind.
Hey, Anita?
Nevermind.
Yeah, yeah, um, I, I hear Mark's unease. Um, yeah, I'm, I'm nervous about this, but I'm, my understanding is that any disturbance of soil in order to uh do the development that is intended in the future on either of the lot, these lots require a separate application that will be re- requiring these measures. Is that correct?
Absolutely, but it goes through the code enforcement officer most likely and not through us. But yeah.
Right.
And just like anybody, any other building or, or development.
And I, I, I guess what I was trying to do is just clarify the fact that, that, that doesn't have any relevance in this subdivision because they're not putting in any infrastructure. So, that's, that's where I was headed, but.
Yeah, I mean, I was in the motion. It, it, my motion was because there is no infrastructure proposed or, or disturb your soil. So, yeah, all those things are covered. So I'll, I'll go ahead. I've got Andrew, yes. Anita?
Yes, aye.
Mark?
Yes, aye.
And that's a yes for me, that's four zero. So, we do, uh, Jim, go ahead and grant those waivers for the applicant. Um, and get back to what else we were doing here. Um. Contour intervals. We're already showing one foot contours, so. Yep. So, anybody wanna make a motion on that one?
Uh, I'm just trying to get caught up here on where, where we've got the right document up.
Well, well, I guess I have a question why that is important.
In this case, it probably isn't.
Okay.
Uh, so do you think it's not, not, not applicable then? Or I mean, it's, it's already, the standard is met regardless? That's, that's where I'm at.
It's much perspective that we can get is, is helpful.
I'm going through my packet, and I went from what we just covered, the uh submissions requirements requested to be waived, and I'm not finding the section about um the contour interval, so I'm not clear on.
Section seven at the end of the agenda, I think.
Yeah, well, aren't, aren't we on the uh submission requirements? Should, shouldn't that be what we're running down the list of?
That's where you were.
I, I just.
I thought, I thought that's where I was.
Okay. Um, I mean, what I'm looking at here is nine copies of the application and documents.
Oh.
Oh, I was looking, I was actually looking at the pre-application determinations, I apologize. Um, which I, which I think are things that we need to have.
Okay, so we're on that, yeah, section seven, the yellow.
The highlighted yellow portion.
So we don't miss it. So I, I don't have further information, background information to explain why I'm voting on this. Contour intervals.
They have provided contour intervals on the map that meet or exceed the standard that we would require. Is that correct, Jeremy?
Yes.
So that's, that really, I was just hoping that someone would make a motion so that I can stop talking for a bit, but I will go ahead and make the motion that um the contour intervals provided on the plans submitted meet the requirements. Andrew?
I'll, I'll second that.
Okay, yeah, I forgot to get some seconds before, so then I'll take Andrew's vote.
Aye.
Uh, Anita?
Aye.
And Mark?
And this is fairly complicated, it's so overly complicated for some, something as minor as this is.
I, I agree. I, that's why I was planning to kind of whip through this, but it, you know. I don't wanna, I don't wanna take, I don't wanna get short shrift to it.
No, I know, this comes right from the subdivision ordinance and, and um it, yeah, it's overly complicated for this project, for this something, but go ahead.
Right, that's why I'm trying to sort of move it along, because a lot of it doesn't really um is either met or required, but I don't wanna, I don't wanna give the impression that we're giving the short shrift either.
Right, and this would be all on page fourteen of the subdivision ordinance, section seven. Right, at the conclusion, and I'm just clarifying, so we're kind of all on the same page.
Yeah.
Conclusion of the pre-application review, the planning board will have determined the following for either a minor or major subdivision. This is a minor one. With no infrastructure being built. So, one is contour intervals, and that's where we just were, and therefore intervals, and we're good. So that's part of the review. The next one would be additional submissions. Is there anything else the board would like added?
Right. And I don't have any, anybody else on the board?
This is gonna be going before the board in a more official manner later with uh details.
We will be, we will be having a, a formal um review, yes. This is a pre-application review. But this is the time to ask for any additional submissions, so that they can have them prepared for any prior following review. So if you have something you wanna see that's not provided, this is the time to ask for it.
Right.
But can I get a motion from somebody?
I guess I move that, that we uh don't need additional submissions at this point. I'm, I am very uneasy about closing the door on any additional sub- submissions ever in the future because we're voting on it now, when we've only just gotten accustomed to this and before our sidewalk. So I I, you know.
Anita, this is within the confines of a pre-application determination. It's not the application. So if you decide down the road that there's something you further need from the applicant, we are free to ask for it and ask that they reply it or, or condition the perm, the uh.
Right. So I, I think it would be appropriate to have an opportunity to ask for, for additional submissions after the sidewalk.
Sure, okay. But for now, did, did you make your motion? Do you wanna restate it?
Um, yes. No additional submissions are requested at this time.
See, I, I, I don't understand where we're at. I mean, I'm looking at the, the packet that we've received, and I'm looking.
Go to page, go to page um set fourteen out of seventeen, section seven.
Oh, I don't have any of that. I've got, I'm looking at appendix B, minor subdivision, final plan, submission requirement.
Uh, part of.
If you're on Article four.
Planning board packet.
One document that went out, um, in, from Genie yesterday or the day before. Applicat- Article four, pre-application review, minor or major, you got section one, two, three, four, five, and the next page would be section seven.
And it's highlighted yellow in my packet.
Yeah.
It'd be helpful to share a screen here on this.
I guess I didn't get any of this information.
Well, I, I, I just went to um, uh, the town website under planning board packet to get mine. Since I.
Let me see if I can get it to you. So the next thing that you have to determine, and again, Mark, this is all coming from the subdivision ordinance. There are six things. You dealt with contour intervals, the next.
Uh, Jeremy, please, please, uh, you know, I haven't even gotten a vote yet or a second on Anita's motion to approve this subdivision. The provisional submission, so I'm just trying to get through this. So, Anita has made a motion. Is there a second?
Seconded.
Thank you, Andrew. Andrew, on that motion?
Aye.
The motion is to uh not require any additional submissions at this time. Anita?
Aye.
And Mark?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Um, now we're going to um address the date of the sidewalk. Um, Jeremy, did you have an idea when this was gonna be set for hearing?
Um, we were, I think Jim was looking, and we were looking at the calendars. It looked like along with Genie, October seventh for a sidewalk in the hearing, if that's what you decide.
Okay, I wanna just throw it out to the board. Do you think that having a sidewalk on the same day as the hearing is gonna work for you? Or would you rather have uh an earlier sidewalk in, in the hope that if you did have any requirements for additional submissions? And I'll just state for the record, my, my position on this, that this is a very simple subdivision. And uh, I, I, I think the sidewalk is mandatory in the, in the ordinance, so we definitely should do it. But I'm, I'd be surprised if we're gonna need to see anything else.
I think that's right. Did you guys see my screen?
Yes.
Yes.
This is what the document was, Mark, and we're, um, it kind of went through this.
And we're at the end here, that's where we are on that list, in section seven.
Why wouldn't we do the site review like on Monday the fourth or something?
That's, that's fine if that's what the, if that's the pleasure of the board. I'm willing to, to do that. It, it does allow for some time in case you have additional submissions and that sort of thing. How, how do people feel about Monday the fourth? Does that work for you, Jim, first of?
Yeah, it works for me.
Okay. Other members of the board, are you able to attend the sidewalk on uh the fourth of October?
Not in the morning.
Not in the morning?
I've got two appointments. The seventh is totally free.
But you can make an afternoon?
Yes. Uh, not, not noon or not before one.
Okay. I'm checking my calendars.
Um, often, you guys ask, oftentimes you ask them to locate where pins are, where lines are gonna be. Do you guys want him to do that? I mean, Jim's gotta kind of fit that into his schedule too.
Yeah, absolutely. That'd be great to have the, the pin set, yeah.
Well, we'll set some great stakes. We typically won't set the pins until after approval, but we'll put some wooden stakes there.
Term of art, yes. Stakes are fine. Um, so do we wanna shoot for the fourth in the afternoon? Or I'm not hearing a whole lot from the board here, so.
I'm okay with that.
Vote for me.
I think there's some benefit to doing it prior to the actual, you know, application hearing, just because again, if there are any questions that come up, I, I really am, you know, would be surprised if there are, you know, not that we have questions, but that we are gonna require anything additional. But I'm open to, to meeting that, so that we give them a little bit of uh leeway to respond to any questions. So, um, I would say, uh, I would make a motion to set the sidewalk. How does uh one thirty on October the fourth, it's a Monday, work for everybody?
That's okay with me.
Vote for me.
I hate to do it in the middle of the day. I mean, either beginning or end of the day.
Right. Late lunch.
Like how late, Mark? Three thirty?
Three thirty, four o'clock.
I could do four, I can't do three thirty.
Four o'clock. I could do, you know, four o'clock either Monday or Thursday, whichever works.
Okay. Well, I wanna, I wanna give uh Andrew's suggestion that we, we do it on the fourth to give a little leeway. It's due, so let's set for four o'clock on Monday, October the fourth. That's my motion. I will go around. Do we need to do this as a motion, Genie?
No, I don't think, you just have to make this in. No, I don't think, you just have to make this in public, announce the date.
I think we, I think we did that.
Yep.
So the sidewalk will happen on October fourth, Monday at four o'clock. Um, and then back to.
Can I ask, um, about parking? Is there room to park on the site, on the street where?
Usually there's room on the street there. I happen to walk down that street with my dog sometimes. Um, I think especially, uh, given that we're after Labor Day, but, um, does the applicant, would the applicant object to parking in their driveway?
Uh, I know there's some work going on down on the main house in that driveway, so I'm not sure how much room there'll be, but.
But there should be street parking, yeah?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we'll be able to manage.
Okay.
I, I will do my part and just walk over there.
I'll ride my bike.
There you go. We're getting somewhere now. Um, okay, so then, uh, the next thing is, uh, the question whether the board wishes to hire an outside consultant. I am going to make a quick motion on that and say that the board does not wish to hire an outside consultant at this time. Key words for Anita, and, um, I'm going to ask for a second.
I'll second.
Great. Uh, Andrew?
Aye.
Anita?
Aye.
And Mark?
Aye.
And that's an aye from me. Okay, and then, um, we just need to publicly state the date of the public hearing. We've already handled the waivers.
You don't have to have a public hearing. You have to decide, this is a minor. You have to decide whether or not you want one.
Oh.
Essentially.
We've, yeah, okay. Well, I will propose that we've heard from the public, the butters. I don't think this is a, an issue that's going to draw a lot of public comment outside of the butters.
The last time you did a minor subdivision, I think was for Jim, and, and you said would, you'd let this pre-application meeting stand in place of a public hearing, that you didn't think there was a need for further.
Okay, that's great. Thanks, Genie. Um, somebody want to frame that into a motion?
Uh, I move that we, uh, do not, uh, schedule a public hearing to further discuss this subdivision.
Seconded.
Okay, and Andrew?
Aye.
Anita?
Aye.
Mark?
Uh, you've got me confused here. I mean, what's the seventh all about? Isn't that going to be a public hearing?
That's going to be the application, uh, review for the planning board. That's going to be a formal.
Final plan submission.
Yeah, final plan submission. This, we're, we're talking about whether we want to schedule a public hearing prior to that.
Yeah, okay.
Aye.
Okay. Jeremy, did you want to jump in real quick or are you all set?
No, I mean, I, I think you've covered it. I mean, I, we don't, you don't, again, you don't need to do a public hearing for a minor subdivision like this. The notice, the difference is, is the notice, really, and I think all of the butters, um, have gotten notice of this public information meeting. They've reached out to me about questions. Uh, mostly about what happens after the subdivision gets approved, um, which isn't the purview of the subdivision anyway. So I think there's been plenty of opportunity for public involvement, and I think Don knows and Derek knows that, um, there's going to be a site visit coming up, and then we'll have a meeting in a few days after that, that he can certainly attend, and, and there will be opportunity for public comment. It just might not be in the formal public hearing, um, context. Makes sense?
Great. Thanks, Jeremy. And so if it wasn't registered, I also say aye to that motion. Uh, Mark, were you an aye?
Aye, yes.
Yep. Okay, so that carries four zero. And Mark, was there something else that you wanted to run through as far as requirements? The, the submission requirements?
Well, you, you know, this is a pre-application, so I really haven't reviewed all this as thoroughly as I should, but under uh, performance standards for shoreline and lots and structures, I'm, uh, what I'm seeing here is minimum lot standards along tidal waters, thirty thousand square feet.
Right, but they're outside of those by the seventy-five foot setback, as, uh, Jim explained.
But they're still in shoreline zoning.
But if, if you keep on going a couple more pages to, uh, it's page, uh, ten, twelve, under A, item K. Do you see that?
Yes.
The minimum lot size in the village.
Oh, seventy-five feet. Okay, I got it. Yep, thank you.
Yep.
Welcome to Jim and my, Jim and my world. All these little things.
Well, I mean, it's a big document we're reviewing here.
Yeah, yeah. Well, and this goes to show, this has taken a, get to the year plus to get to this point because we had the discussion about whether or not what was there was a dwelling. And then can you split it off? How do you split it off? And it's taken this, this amount of time to get there, so. Yeah.
Well.
The system's working.
So I'd just like to point out, I mean, it's, you, you know, it's our job as the board to make sure that this is all being interpreted properly, so.
Absolutely, and, and any questions and concerns you have are free, you're, you're entitled to raise. Is there, is, I'm just, I was asking if there was something that you felt like in the, um, submission requirements that you felt that we haven't covered or that you, we need to cover for this, for the purposes of this pre-application meeting?
Uh, I'm good with it right now, yes.
Okay. All right, um, Jim, did you have any questions for the board?
No, I think I'm all set.
Okay. I think, uh, the direction that we have right now is, uh, as submitted, everything looks, uh, all set. Um, we will, uh, hold the sidewalk as stated on Monday, October fourth at four P M. And we will look to, do we need to set the time for the next meeting or is that already been set?
That's set for the ninth, no, correct?
Seven.
Was that, was that proposed or set?
Um, I think that.
The next meeting is the twenty-third, but you're talking about this, on this issue.
Correct.
The next meeting on this issue, correct?
Is the seventh.
Seventh, yes. That's all set.
All right, that's all set. All right, then we, if I'm not mistaken, then somebody gets to make my favorite motion.
I move that we adjourn.
You got it, Anita. Lucky, lucky guess. Uh, did you get a second, Andy?
Yeah.
Okay, good. Uh, Andrew?
Aye.
Anita?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
And it's an aye from me. That's four, and I'm guessing we have an aye from all the other attendees as well. Um, thanks, everybody. Um, thanks Jim for a very clear presentation, and, uh, we'll look forward to seeing you on Monday, October.